Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The Village of Webster Board Meeting for October 28, 2021. And Jerry, would you lead us, please, in your flag?
Yes, sir.
... United States of America, into a republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can sit. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation to John Bucci from The Music Store. This is an institution, I guess we would say, in the village, a long-lived place, a destination, the music shop, and you have certainly provided much culture, I think I would say, because as I was growing up, music lessons and the music that I was exposed to with the clarinet and all of that in high school and music lessons at the Hochstein School and so on, it was a cultural thing. So if you would please join me at the podium. We have a proclamation for you. This, as I said, this is a great honor because I've been in and I have been by that, your store, for many, many years. And I know that you have provided to this community a wonderful musical experience and opportunity to just enjoy something that I know you enjoy yourself, and that is music. So on behalf of the board, I would like to present this proclamation. The Village of Webster, whereas for 32 years, John Bucci, the owner of The Music Store, located at 18 East Main Street, has been a longstanding fixture in the Village of Webster. And whereas John has provided service and repairs to instruments, school music rentals, and has taught music lessons for generations, all that have entered have then met with his kindness, his honesty, and his expertise. And whereas the Village of Webster community is a better place because of John's love and passion for music, as well as his wonderful holiday displays, yes, loved by all. Therefore, let it be known that we, Mayor Darryl Byers and the Village Board of Trustees, on behalf of the Village of Webster, do hereby recognize and applaud John Bucci for his hard work, his dedication in supporting the village and surrounding community over the last 32 years, and extend our sincere appreciation to John and wish him many continued years of happiness and good health in retirement. Reclaimed this 28th day of October, 2021. I want to thank you personally. I am there, and it's just been a wonderful thing, just to look at the front, and it's inviting. And just again, I want to thank you and applaud you for your service.
You had to put anything about the Christmas. I was all good until you said that.
Those are special.
Well, I put a lot of effort into that. A lot of you, you know, I'd always start thinking about that in September, and how can I do it different? You know, that was a lot. It was all sparked by my kids. Kids' first train was all sparked by the kids and stuff like that.
Awesome.
Thank you. Oh, no. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
We're going to see what life has to offer that's not seven days a week and not stand behind a counter, and maybe try to get my passion back from life. That's kind of what our goal is.
Yeah, that would be great. Well, thank you again. I totally appreciate it. I have a little touch at you guys. What do you think to do something?
Okay, next we have our public comment opportunity to address the board on any issue that you would like to. Come to the microphone, podium, and state your name.
Thanks for calling, Lundy. Carl Onrath, Village resident, Village Business. I just want to thank the village workers for their help with our Oktoberfest on Saturday. We had about 200 people attend. We had band, so we had food. But once again, the village workers, we couldn't have done it without them. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, Carl.
Hi. Lexi Popovich, Smoking Health Action Coalition, part of the American Lung Association. I've been here before to kind of talk about tobacco-free parks and grounds. So just checking in, kind of back here to kind of educate you guys on some of those issues. So I worked with the town of Roundacoy, the town of Brighton, and the town of Perrington on all going tobacco and smoke-free in their parks and grounds, 100%. I've worked with St. John Fisher, SUNY Geneseo, University of Rochester, and National College as well for their smoke-free and tobacco-free policies. Kind of the issue that we still are trying to educate around some of the municipalities in Monroe County is with the e-cigarette epidemic with some of the youth that's still happening, and the issues of secondhand smoke at parks and what have you. I do suffer from asthma, and as a runner, I frequently get seen as a nuisance when I'm at a park or running, and there's secondhand smoke and tobacco smoke. And for people that are choosing not to smoke and not use cigarettes and e-cigarettes, it's kind of becomes a nuisance for the smoke drift. And usually in parks, it's meant to be for families and youth to go and kind of experience and be, you know, reiterating wellness and health and safety. So also along those lines, with COVID-19 happening, it's a perfect time that a lot of places are going tobacco-free. It's kind of fits right in with, you know, lung disease and lung health as well. And then also with marijuana being passed soon, we're working with a lot of municipalities right now, a lot of villages and towns, that are interested in coupling a tobacco and smoke-free policy on their parks with marijuana. So as it becomes legalized, there's, you know, you're not going to see youth or young adults smoking marijuana just in your parks openly, although it will be legalized. So that's something that we're also educating on and kind of just hoping to uphold the health and safety of all citizens in the community, mostly youth and families as well. So if you have any questions, I have sent you guys a letter yesterday and some information, but we have plenty of resources. We can share some policies that we've worked on locally and other towns that we're working currently right now to kind of move through that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Janine Sanger, Webster Health and Education Network. I've also been here before with Lexi. We are a drug-free community coalition, and our goal as a coalition is to stave off early use of drugs and alcohol by use as long as we possibly can. In that, our goal is the longer we stave that off, the less likely it is that they will end up with an addiction later on in life. So we support smoke-free parks just for the plain reason of reducing exposure by two youth and families of drugs and alcohol or drugs and smoke. And we hope that you will support this policy as well. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them as well.
I got a question for you. One of other municipalities or parks, et cetera, they put signage up. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so we actually have room in our budget that we provide signage. I provided signage for Roundacoy, Brighton, and Perrington. So that includes vaping and tobacco. They put that, you know, right in the entrance of their town hall and right in some of the parks. So we kind of cover those costs. And now with marijuana, we're allowed to make signs that include a marijuana sign as well. So that's something that other municipalities are kind of going in that direction. And we do provide, you know, different types of cessation resources for any maintenance workers or town workers who need to avoid smoking on property. And that includes a sign in judgment.
All the simple signs are, believe me, after you go through and stop in Vegas and walk outside and call the bottom early, guys, it is disgusting and I'm 100% for it. Can we get some signs, or what do we need to do?
Can you guys turn your mic on? Maybe.
You gotta hold it.
Yes, I can. Yeah, definitely. Usually, some of the other, so Roundacoy and Perrington moved it to like a public hearing and then voted on that, just to kind of get it into a policy, a code. And we provided that signage. But we can, you know, I can share that signage with you guys and show you some examples and kind of what that looks like, and then we kind of cover that and we bring them right to you. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
If there's draft code language too, then we can present to the board that consider and publish.
Yeah, definitely. We can, I'll send you all those three towns. A couple, Henrietta's is also tobacco-free, 100% tobacco-free, and just kind of that draft language. And it's pretty generic and straightforward, actually, so.
Great, that'd be great. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
I'm on for it, for sure.
We will be having a, this month, we will be voting and having a discussion and then a vote on whether or not to allow smoke shops, marijuana smoke shops, vaping, or not vaping, but specifically marijuana distributor in the village. And so that would probably tie in. We already have for parks, basically, I think we have something in the books for smoking, do we not? I think so. It's on village property, so the village park would be probably considered, although there's not enforcement much to it.
I think that there's policies, policies, but I don't know, I don't believe we have it in a code. So the policies would apply, I think internally, and a code would apply, you know, to everyone. So that would be great to give you the copies of the code language.
I think you need to adapt a local law if you want to have anything that's enforceable.
And we have all that language, as you're saying, so those towns did adapt.
You can't just stick up a sign.
There will be a law.
Sign that's like, yes.
Seems that what trustee Valkey just wanted to put up signs. It's not that easy.
I knew we had to go through you.
Okay, thank you.
And here's some information on marijuana texts and regulations, so I have a copy for each of you.
All right, great, thanks.
Have a look at it. There's a lot of information in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll get that information to the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So since I really couldn't say anything at the time that you were doing this, right? And as you were reading it, I was even less able to speak, which any of you who knows me is like almost impossible anyway. The greatest thing I had, you and I spoke last week, you came back. I knew your dad, obviously. I knew you when you were young, and now I see your kid. And that's the greatest thing that that place was able to do for me. What I sold was stuff. You can get stuff anywhere. But my ability to see that and see the residents here and actually be part of that, you know, not just people from out of the area, but really a lot of people that are in the area that I still see, Ms. Sanger who just left, you know? That was the greatest thing that this village gave me the ability to do. And that's the thing I'm going to miss the most. And through the past couple of weeks, or yeah, several weeks of seeing like you and other customers and parents of kids who now have kids, you know? I gotta tell you, that was the greatest thing that a small community could really offer for any of this. So I hope that as we go five years out, 10 years out, that there's still that availability that this village can still support. And everybody else can have that, because I didn't notice the value of that until much. Fifteen years goes by, 18 years goes by, and you start to see like, hey, what am I really doing here? And that's what I was really good at, so. Thanks for everything, guys. Thanks for letting me do my stuff. And we'll see you on the lamppost.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address the board this evening? If not, then we will move to close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move to Village Business. Our first item is a resolution to approve the minutes of the October 8 to the October 14 meeting. There's only, I think there's even a page, is there? It's 14 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I didn't hear who the second was.
Jerry.
This is the first minutes I ever seen all done on a post-it note.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Valkey.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye. Next, we have the resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I have put those over, and I do not have any particular item on here that I have a question on. I did have a question on BJ's card of $200 for Jake, but I understand that that covers several others than just yourself, so.
Right. It says, "Membership, bring in the swing." I have all here. I didn't recognize coaster associates.
And it's passenger associates should be on the sewer portion of it.
It says a color of hardware mechanical seal that's for sewer.
Yes.
When I find it, I'll speak up.
And that's for a grit removal system.
What is that, a stone, dome-like product in sewer, a mower?
They had some stone down there for, I believe in the back of an art toy there where they parked some stuff, made some stone there. And then there's also a pathway, and they had put some works coming out that goes out to the tanks, so they get the trucks out there. They had a bad time truck out there when they're cleaning the tanks and that. Just a little stone.
Rather than paving, stone is.
Yes.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah. From Williamson Automotive Truck and Trailer Service. I saw a bill for $724.35. It says, "New York State inspection of the 17-foot Ford Truck W3. $20 for the inspection." And then it says, "Repair worked on, fixed any grease leaks and found two bad rings in one gasket for $570 of labor." That just sounded like, what piston rings or what?
No, I think it was piston rings. I had to look back at the, back to the bill, never asked about the time it went out. Oh, two bad O-rings in one gasket must have been in the system where he's chasing down where the leaks are. I can get more information on that.
Oh, no, funny, it's been around some of these large gaskets. It is some serious labor. I think you're taking apart all the things, the whole thing.
Yeah.
We haven't taken a hundred of them, usually, in the service section.
This is our relatively new dump truck there. So they, you know, in the old days, you could open the hood and see the ground. Now you can take half of it off and you still can't see the ground. Mostly you have to take everything off to get to where they're getting to, so. I can find out exactly what.
I was wondering also about warranty, too.
There's some change in it.
I agree that labor cost is very high.
I just learned it's labor-intensive, the gasket.
Yeah, this is always fun when you have $500 in labor to change it at 37 cents.
Yeah.
That's why I questioned it.
Yeah, well, it's funny you say that. We have one right now that we're kind of in dispute with, with Caterpillar. There is a sensor for our depth tank. That's a diesel exhaust fluid there, that tank that went bad and was covered under warranty. And they sent us a bill, I think it was for $800, because traveling to and from the machine and the labor was not covered under warranty, just the part, it was probably 20 bucks. But they could have thrown in an envelope for us and said, hey, change this, unscrew this and put it back in. But they said, no, it's under warranty. Here's a bill for $800. And I said, nice try. So we haven't got the new one back yet, but I called their salesman and I explained to him that part of our purchase decision is how much value we're getting out of it, including, you know, the stuff that's done under warranty. And if it costs $800 for a $20 part, maybe our last Caterpillar we have. And so he was, oh, no, let me talk to the service guy, send it over to me. Okay. Not in there back yet, but that's ridiculous. I don't regret them making a living or earning money, but they don't have to make it all at once.
We're all off the list.
Yeah.
That seems, just seemed pretty high to me. I can, I'm, night business is labor-intensive, too.
But hey, Tom, the hell, he's the most, he's in the trucking business.
Yeah, I just got an inspection on every other passenger truck yesterday, two days ago. An inspection, oil change, and there was one sensor bed in the fuel tank, and the evaporation sensor, I guess, and pissed 350 bucks on, just like that, so.
He pissed out an $1,800 drive shift.
I remember the day every oil change was set, I was paid $17 an hour, and I'd be the oil changes, or like 100 bucks.
Yeah.
All the freaking needs, 100 bucks to get an oil change, so.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It is what it is.
It is.
That's just to get to the pocket, that's to get to the claim.
All right.
I want to take a motion if there are any other questions. To pay the claims and warrants.
I'll make it.
Trustee Valkey.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the village treasurer to accept and sign the grant disbursement request affidavit for the East Main Street Revitalization New York Project Number 131758. I believe that that is the one that involves Charlie Fitzsimmons and the work that he has done on various places. And he is finishing up at this point, so it's been a long process. But this is authorization to accept and sign the grant disbursement.
A copy of that affidavit was presented in the packet?
I don't see it.
It's in this large packet.
So one person saw it.
I, she gave it to me, she gave it to me, and I got her, so I looked at it. Now Darryl's looked at it, and now we can pass it down to you. She didn't want to scan it and waste.
Matt said that because you had already seen it.
I think that would be, well, if you scan something, you don't waste any paper.
Well, print it. Scanning is going to do no good because I don't have computers in front of everybody, but. So you know what I meant.
That'll be the best.
I mean, because we were trying to conserve money issues, not payables received from our agenda.
I only printed your files as copy in color. Sorry, Matt said that you had already all had seen it, and I showed it to Darryl earlier, and he said, I wouldn't scan that, it's 30 pages, and, sorry.
Well, the affidavit isn't 30 pages. The affidavit is like one page. No, it's one page.
So you haven't seen it now?
No, I saw it.
Oh.
You didn't need to, you don't have to give, this is actually.
Mayor Byers approved this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's only on the boss.
I did. Sorry. I did ask your permission.
I just gave you this one copy, and I didn't bring out everything to the board.
Yeah, there's, this is the actual document that gets signed in two places. And I suggested that the treasurer sign it instead of the mayor because you got to certify that you read and reviewed all the rest of this stuff and agreed to it that it's correct. And since Marsha did review all this stuff with Matt, and Darryl hasn't, Darryl didn't, I don't assume saw all this in Florida, because probably nobody sent it to you, that it would be best for Marsha to do it.
I briefly looked through it actually today.
This is, this is the, this is the, what needs to be signed.
This is the, this is the cost of what we actually, is what provided the $350,000 is the actual amount. Because there are a lot of different amounts in there, but this is the amount that was approved, I guess you'd say, for Charlie's.
Yeah, well, if you go through all this, rest of this stuff, Charlie Fitzsimmons spent like four times $350,000.
That's not a lot.
And he gets, he'll get reimbursed just the $350,000.
Correct.
But you got to show all the work that he did. And that's, that's in all of, all of this stuff. And, you know, there's certifying to the minority business stuff and. But suffice it to say, you know, Marsha went through all of this, and that's why I think it's best just to have her sign it. So you're just authorizing her to sign it.
And that is what we're doing.
And the village will get a check in who knows how long from the state of New York. And then can he have another one of your proclamations or something? Get one of those big checks to actually give to Charlie for $350,000.
I think we, we're hooked for what, five or something like that?
The village isn't on the hook for anything. The 10%, and it's kind of confusing. There is a 10% match, but that can be made up in the owner's equity in the property. So basically, we just had to show that Charlie Fitzsimmons spent at least $35,000 to fix this, fix it up. So there really was, is no, and they consider that the municipal match, even on the municipality, they didn't spend anything. So I'm like, okay, you know, if that's, if those are the stage rules, then great. Yeah. Because, because until you get to the tail end of this, they never really explain that, you know, how the match is done. So this won't cost the village anything, and Charlie Fitzsimmons Company will get reimbursed $350,000 of the money that he spent to rehab the buildings.
And he's doing well. The one, I'd like to see what's coming into the last building that he did. And I think that that is going to be done as well as the other buildings. Certainly, the old bakery, those made two a number of times, and.
Well, that, that doesn't count, clearly. The new stuff in the back.
Like what he's done.
The new stuff in the back wasn't. The new stuff in the back wasn't part of the grant, it was rehabbing the existing buildings along Main Street.
What he's done.
Yeah. So if you want to put that on top and-
This has to go back?
It'll go back to Marsha.
So we are back to, um, a resolution to authorize, um, our treasurer, Marsha Adams, to, uh, sign and accept this grant disbursement request.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Uh, next we have a resolution to authorize, uh, myself to sign the memorandum of understanding with the town of Webster related to the existence of a floodplain on the site of the STP located at six thirteen Webster Road, uh, to bring the property into compliance with FEMA. And, uh, this memorandum of understanding, uh, talks about, uh, basically in terms of this floodplain, responsibilities of the village would be to, um, acknowledge that the cradle for the Salter can remain in its current location to serve it in its useful life, but if removed, it will, uh, need to be relocated to an area outside the floodplain, and no other structure will be placed in that location or any location within the floodplain and/or floodway. So, uh, this is a memorandum of understanding between the village of Webster and the town of Webster. And looking for authorization to sign that.
I'll make a motion. Second it.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next we have a resolution to approve the proposed connection of the home at eight seventy-five Phillips Road to the village of Webster sanitary sewer system as an out-of-district sewer user. Uh, this would be granted upon the following understanding, that the village shall continue to maintain the sewer main. Property owner shall bear the responsibility for the installation and maintenance of the sewer latero. And property owner shall include, schedule the, with the village, a suitable time to witness the connection to the village sanitary sewer system and the installation of the lateral serving the home. The town property, the property owner shall be billed directly by the town of Webster for sewer service, and the village shall receive compensation from the town based upon the existing IMA within the annual out-of-district sewer user invoice. Looking for approval for eight seventy-five Phillips Road to connect to the sewer system as an out-of-district user.
I assume by this being on the agenda, Don has reviewed this in our-
Yeah, I, yeah, it's fine, yeah, I assume, is this an existing home?
Yes.
Whose septic system is now failed or is failing or something?
And so rather than spending money to replace the septic system, it's cheaper to tie into the village's sewer? Yeah.
That's fruitful, yes, in a short, yes, but I don't like short answers, I'm gonna give the one I wanna give. Um, the town and the village both have their code, and if there's sewer available, you have to use it. If there's public sewer available, you have to use it. Um, you, if you have an existing septic system, it could be maintained, but there is this requirement to switch. But since there's not town sewer available right by the house, and in cases that we have, where if there was a village sewer available, we might have somebody being an out-of-district sewer user of the town, and we're in the village, and Phillips are out there, and out-of-district sewer users in the village. Um, you know, and town users using ours, but, yeah, so we are, we're always trying to encourage people, whether they have a septic system, and not only encourage them, but require it, so, um, this is that situation exactly. The other septic system's going bad, and they want to plan, it's nice, it's beat, this, the mains behind the sidewalk, so they don't even have to tear into the sidewalk or the street or anything, so, you know, get right in and, and go.
What happens to the septic system?
It has to be closed.
But the town, whether the town, the town looks, you know, well, since it's within the town, that's their jurisdiction. Make sure that the septic system was properly closed up or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Looks like they're doing that all along Lake Road. Um, from Bay Road.
East. Oh, really? I know there's, there's mains that go down there, there goes that pump station there, and I know they're doing some-
Now they're all tying into this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Uh, next we have a resolution to approve the GRT settlement agreement with RG&E and Comptel, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Uh, this was, um, Comptel is the company that, uh, goes after monies that, um, have not been collected from, uh, various entities, and, um, they have, uh, been able to, um, procure, or that we would become part of, um, a suit, I guess, against RG&E. And, um, out of that, uh, we would be, I think, use that twenty-two thousand, and it's a total of about thirty-three.
Correct.
And then using, uh, taking their percentage, I believe we're going to be receiving about twenty-two thousand.
Yes, sir.
And over years, that they, uh, have not paid and are going to pay. Um, and then they will continue to, uh, pay what they should have done all this time. So, uh, this is a resolution to approve the settlement agreement, uh, with RG&E, between RG&E and Comptel.
Yeah, and I assumed, uh, it'll-
Yeah, remember, you could spend a fairly standard, you know, release.
Really, no? I'll make it.
If you want the twenty-two thousand dollars, it'll authorize them to sign.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, uh, moving on, we, uh, next are looking for a resolution to approve the release of four hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and six point, uh, and twenty-nine cents, four hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and six. From the letter of credit for Greenbrier Crossing, or the request dated nine nine twenty-one, and authorize the mayor to sign the document to facilitate the release of these funds. Believe that, uh, this is because the amount was, um, well, because they're doing the work, correct?
That's right.
And so we're releasing that money, and they are doing the work.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Work's coming along very. Very nicely.
Ben's incredible, so we're trying to, the laws gave it in.
No, that's not this one.
No.
No, they's Brittany, right.
Yeah.
Brittany goes to Walzak.
All right, now the last resolution that's here is to authorize the, uh, mayor to sign the easement, um, at Case Park with Greenlight Networks. And in my reading through this, um, I have, I have reservations regarding it because it's, uh, I don't know, it's kind of negativist, there's, there's not a specific area, uh, place in the park.
In the back, if I tend, I just realized, I forgot this on Heather, the-
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, because we had this as a document, and there was an exhibit A that was, I think you have the original email way back when, but that exhibit A was modified some to include three maps. It's basically, you know, the walking path at the end of Iroquois Street to Wood Street. Um, it's kind of adjacent to that right along there. It is spelled out, um, in the, um, in the easement itself, there'll be attached to it, there's the maps that show exactly where it's going. Um, there's, there's that asphalt path that runs, you know, you know where I'm talking about the end of Iroquois? And it cuts over to Wood through the park?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right, it's right there. No.
How wide is it?
The easement area, I think it's gonna be ten feet wide.
Ten feet wide.
But they, really, they're, they're putting the cable in, but they usually get the easement wide enough for their equipment to, so they can stay within the easement area.
It's adjacent to that little pad.
Yeah.
Which is only like from here to that door. It's not very long. And they must need it so, so that they can bring the fiber optic from Iroquois Street over to Wood Street.
Right.
So?
Oh, that'll take a while.
Is this, uh, is this an underground?
Yeah.
Cable?
I just switched to a nice way.
Very. Very good.
I, I saw the exhibit A, and the three maps, it's, it's well defined if you look at the three maps that are attached, that regrettably didn't link it into your packet.
One modification is-
It's a connection. It's where, it's where that little walkway is from the end of Wood Street to Iroquois, right? So it's not really cutting through actually any of the park itself.
That's right.
It's just along the edge of it, correct?
Yeah, it's a grass area, yeah.
So it's not like they're gonna be digging up Case Park.
Right.
Sure, into the door.
Is it a conduit?
It will be, I believe, yes, and, and that's one of the things we changed on here, is that they had kind of opened it, and it was cable and conduit and other facilities or other, uh, things, where you said, oh, cable and conduit's what you're asking for, and it's what's in the easement, is you can have cable and conduit, and when you come back, if you need to put a box or a big switch or something, then you're gonna come back and ask if you can put that in there, if not, you know, it's not a, you know, ask for a cable and, cable to run through there and then-
Then you build a house, small houses.
Yeah, yeah, you get a little, yeah, shack there to control all your, or have all your equipment in and stuff, so.
All right. I'll make that. I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, Don, anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement. I think we have Aaron here this evening.
I think he might be on his way, he's at Girl Scouts. Hopefully he has his daughter with him, and he's not just there by himself.
We've got a question here. I was gonna, if it's turned into a candy store next to La La's.
Yes.
I heard it's gonna be an offshoot of La La's.
It is, it's the same owner.
It's the same owner.
Lot of different stuff for, uh, for the kids.
So toys and candy, or just?
Not totally candy, no, it's just, uh, a place for, uh, little kids to go do, you know, these fun things.
It's not, uh, purchasing, it's an activities?
Oh, no, there's purchasing, I think, too.
I think that's the whole candy store.
There'll be, I guess that you could say it's an extension of La La's. But not totally, they, she, she really wants to present it to the younger citizens in our village, you know? Oh, and there'll be, I think there's gonna be some themes to play. You can take her face and one of those things and take a picture, and, you know, all that kind of stuff, so. It's, it's really nicely decorated, it's, if you haven't seen it, you should buy it, take a look, it's really nice. She's putting a lot of money into that place.
Have whimsies.
They have, uh, they're doing up shares.
Yeah.
On that subject, did the ice cream store belong there?
Yeah, it looked like it did.
The borderman's, it's closed.
For the stop ice cream season.
It's been a couple of weeks, I mean. Amos is still open, and Rooster's still open. Rooster's open, it's all, yeah. Have you heard anything? Did they just close for the season, or you're not sure?
I tried to overlook the ice cream store, because I don't need ice cream really. It looks like it's closed permanently, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's what you know for sure, Don.
It's not.
No, someone, someone told me they're thinking about maybe opening it and, and doing soups and things like that.
Yeah, I heard soups and chili and stuff like this.
I think they're just trying to figure out-
What that is.
Probably gonna pay the rent. Right, but to stay open, you know, it's colder weather, there's not the same foot traffic with kids coming down there going buy ice cream, so.
Right.
It's probably cheaper for them to close it than to pay somebody to sit there.
That would be nice, uh, you know, a winter kind of menu.
Maybe we should put a bike rack in front of it, be there too. But that always, that areas you can eat from ice cream.
How far is that bike rack from the bus depot?
It's probably twenty feet.
Nine, from here to the door. From here to the-
Much less than that. I still don't understand the whole discussion on the bike rack, because it's for exercise, and if I put it down on Phillips Road, you get more exercise the way it's down there. So I thought that was the best place, put it further away to help out.
It's the one that's down on the hill by the, uh-
Vet's Park.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where it's there, no.
I think people go to Vet's Park, if you haven't spotted the park in there.
I did push it through, but.
Well, okay, uh, any report from the office? No?
She was just hoping she could get some compliments on the extra time she's not on the agenda.
And we need to purchase some-
I think this is an outstanding.
We need new color, even for the printer.
Looks cute.
Thanks.
And we need a pallet of paper.
I was trying to make you smile, okay, and I only did it for your copy, and mine. Um, we got, we were able to get, um, a donation, a very big donation from Wegmans and, um, Panera for the trick or treat trail tomorrow for our costume contest, or Saturday. And, um, we got two hundred cookies donated from Panera and two hundred juice boxes from Wegmans. So when they leave, we'll be handing those out, not for you.
When are we picking those up?
You didn't hear that, did you?
I'll be picking those up Saturday.
We have a hundred and seventy-five cookies.
You got a hundred and seventy-five cookies?
Right.
So I'll be picking those up first thing in the morning on Saturday.
Oh, you gotta go back to holding them up.
That's all I have.
Well, I know that, uh, if I put in a lot of junk, it's gonna fall in, so. Let's just hope that the weather cooperates.
And so, Martha, thank you.
I will do that.
And, uh, I haven't heard from her actually, but I think she's doing all right.
Yeah.
Doing well in, uh, the brochure.
Yeah.
All right, well, what's-
Aaron's here for the report.
Our code enforcement officer has arrived.
He was there to sell cookies.
In our, our last code enforcement, she sat right up here with us.
I didn't have a date that's sudden.
Oh, Heather could fix that. Is there a candy store in the village?
There is.
Is it really gonna specialize?
That's where my new office is gonna be. I need candy, is it? Yes.
They don't have windows there.
That's a good idea.
They're lost in places, probably, and it can't change.
Yeah.
There's definitely some, you know, uh, uh-
Yes, please.
There's a, uh, involved, or it's, it doesn't count on, any candy, and I like to use it.
Okay.
I apologize for being late, I had, uh, Girl Scouts here in town.
Not bad, only an hour.
I know.
Where's your stash?
I left it in my office. Um, so anyway, uh, for the permits total, as you can see, there was eleven total permits for September, uh, a bunch of twenty-plus violations, there was probably more than that.
It's in there. It's in mine.
I don't have to need it.
Don't have them.
But that's what I'm here for.
Eleven certificates, certificate of occupancy, eight certificate of compliances. We're still working on updating the store management program plan. Sorry. As a report, everyone's still catching up on old permits. I'm actually coming along very well, hopefully it'll be cleared up soon. Brittany Woods is continuing their completion of their work. Their pond is getting dug out and cleaned up for, you know, the issues that were there. They did have a structure fire in one of their apartments, so that's, that unit is condemned right now. They have already pulled permits to get that repaired, hopefully by the end of January, February, that'll be, that'll quickly be repaired.
Do you know why? Was that electrical? Was it something that was, you know, resident cause?
Yeah, no, it wasn't residents fault. I did just get the fire investigator's report and it was, it was caused by the dryer. So, you know, no fault of, no fault of the tenant, so. Also with Brittany Woods, they also pulled another permit for one of their units. They had a structural collapse last year that we found out about. Remember we talked about this last month, but we found out that a structural collapse had kinda hit it from everybody, hit it from the hell out of the gate. I was notified about it this year, so we, you know, took the proper steps in getting hold of them, going and inspecting the unit. And it's a good thing we did because it's also currently collapsing right now. So they had shore up the steel beams that hold up basically the whole unit. So it was an imminent threat of another full structural collapse of the foundation wall. So that's, you know, we're dealing with that and structural engineers and everything with that. Greenbrier, I don't know if anybody's doing my greenbrier, besides the lakes that they have from, you know, the weather. It's been pretty dry lately. So they're working very diligently over there. They're trying to get at least two of the units started this year. And they've, they're putting the roads right now. They're actually putting stone down tomorrow for the roads. They've done the curb cuts and everything else that's going on. So the final step for that will be tomorrow, put the road in, going off State Road. Country Manor, I know I reported on this last month, but I get calls daily. What I mean daily, I've gotten several calls. I was just there today for several hours. It's gonna be ongoing. Time, painstakingly issue going on. There are new owners that are supposed to be signing. The paper is due tomorrow or within a week, or we're hearing it might be tomorrow. So the new owners are already saying that they're gonna hit ground running. They've already got contractors lined up, they've already got some, some plans going, so hopefully they'll.
So the new owners will get their violations?
They are, they actually walked through every single apartment and they're very well aware of what's going on. They probably know more than us, to be honest with you. And they, they said, and it sounds like it's a local company, they have units in Pittsburgh, I believe it is, Pittsburgh and Brighton, I think. Is it a company? Yeah, it's a investor company type. There must be a due date, and I'm not disclosing because we don't know who did it yet. So, um, so that's a big, a big thing on our radar. I mean, they haven't even had law and smoke down there since the end of August. And, you know, their management staff has actually, hopefully admitted that it's, it's a mess down there right now. So it's been taking up a lot of time. And then the other thing that's been taking up quite a bit of time lately is the, the old church mall. We currently have that building condemned for reasons. We got called by the fire marshals, they did a fire inspection and they noticed some, you know, some violations, some issues, structural issues, so we got a call, we went there right away. They've got jacks holding up concrete ceilings and it's, it's not.
So any of the tenants in there are not?
We moved the tenants out and put them in the, I'll call it the newer section, the west wing there. But then after the structural engineer's report came in, you know, they had to get an engineer in there. As of this Saturday, it'll be the whole unit being condemned, nobody's gonna be allowed in there at all. So the tenants that are in there are now gonna be, you know, displaced until the new structural engineer that they're gonna get Monday morning. If he deems at least the one entrance facing the rear, the north parking lot, if he deems that unit, that entranceway safe, we'll allow the tenants back in, the west wing only. But on the, the church mall part of it, they've got some, some, some major structural stuff going on with the roof area. So that's gonna be, you know, a lot going on with that. I know Jake's working on stuff with the sidewalk and making sure, you know, we're gonna have to block off the sidewalk because we don't know if it's gonna collapse today, tomorrow. We don't, we don't know. So we gotta be careful. So other than all that, you know, there's the normal stuff going on and trying to keep up on, on everything. There's a lot going on right now, so. That's about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Byers, I did have one other thing, sorry.
Speak.
Okay. We, in the office, were talking about, you know, so we start getting applicants for, we call it, I think I've forgotten the word, peddler's applications. But I think that we might need to do kind of a code change of some sort because if a food truck wants to come in as part of a, as part of an event or something like that, or, you know, someone going down the street selling those lights that they do every, all, all the parades, we don't really feel that they should have to pay the same amount that someone should have to go and pay if they're going door to door. So when I worked at the county parks department, when we did a lot of event stuff, you know, we really feel like it should be, it's just kind of an umbrella, like if you're gonna sell something or if you're trying to go door to door, I think it should be different. So, 'cause it's like four hundred dollars for the year.
Yeah, we did, we talked about it in the office yesterday. I, I actually do agree, 'cause you got, like she said, you know, you got somebody selling stuff for a couple of parades that they come in and they pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars for, right, a hundred and twenty-five?
One twenty-five for one event or four twenty-five for the year. And they might, if it's rain, they might make, it's just.
Yeah, if it's raining or the weather, they don't, they get canceled, gets canceled, you know, they don't get the money back. But we do feel that that's pretty high. I mean, we kind of threw around a couple of numbers, you know, whether it be twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars for them to come in and just sell that type of stuff.
So did we check into any other municipalities and what they're doing in the years?
Not yet, this is literally just.
Get more way out.
Yeah, so for, you know, for next year, I think we'll, you know, hopefully have something on record. But this kind of goes along with the stuff that we talked about the last couple of meetings. Kind of needing to revamp some of the codes that are a little bit updated or re-updating and everything like that. There are several that, when Jake has a hard time figuring some of them out, you know. We know how the brain works, it's constant, but, but now it answers, some of them just don't, without due respect, just don't make sense.
And at the very least, like, it just shouldn't, it should be separate in terms of if you're gonna be selling something or if you're gonna be going door to door, if you're selling food, it's, it's very different. There at least should be some differentiation there in the code.
Well, I don't have the code in front of me. Is the actual fee the hundred and twenty-five dollars in the code or is it part of the fee schedule?
Fee schedule, but.
So you don't need to amend the code, you just need to amend the fee schedule, which is simple, that you can do by resolution.
But it doesn't differentiate, okay, Aaron just said that we probably need to do a code change because it doesn't differentiate it at all even on the fee schedule, it's just peddling.
I understand that.
Okay.
But you can differentiate it on the fee schedule, you don't need to differentiate it in the code.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to read the code, but I don't think it's actually in the.
Yeah, I did look at the code.
I don't think the fee is actually part of.
The code.
The local law.
Yeah.
The fee schedule, we have, it just says it's subject to a fee. Probably some of the works that affect, but then, so you can just amend the fee schedule. And if you wanna create different categories within the fee schedule, it's no different than different categories of.
Even one of the code is right.
Building permits or, I don't know.
It needs to be updated.
Yeah, like I said, this was just brought up yesterday, we're, I myself having read the code for everything else going on. So just to have some.
Look at the code, I don't believe it's in the code. So if it's not in the code, you can just do it through the fee schedule.
So we brought this up pretty much early without the.
Just putting it, just putting it in your minds and then, well, actually I have a question for Don too. We, when we had to do events before, if someone wanted to sell something in an event or whatever, we would have to put, they would have to list Monroe County as an additional insured in terms of if they're gonna be selling things, so. Or if someone gets hurt, like a bounce house is part of a bid event, we're just not sure who's liable for that. So I just wanted to double check on that. We could talk about that sometime.
Okay.
It's all events, we don't, we don't really have, we're not in the business of doing events and we get a lot of requests to self-stop at events and stuff like that.
Okay, well, if it's a bid event, the bid should have its own insurance.
Okay, well, I just don't know, that's what I'm asking.
You know, and if you block off Main Street, you stick a bounce house on Main Street, that's a state road.
Yeah.
So if somebody gets hurt, they might sue the state and the state's gonna get a little mad at the village or, you know, did you let us know that this kind of stuff was gonna be happening within a perp people way?
Well, not the worst question then. Because we have, at White Christmas, there's a bounce house right in front of, we never get told about it or.
Yeah, could be a bad question.
Yeah.
Right in front of Village Hall, there's, they put.
The driveway there.
It's in, it's on the road.
Oh, it's on the road. You meant to say driveway?
Driveway. It's out in Main Street, it's out sitting in Main Street?
Well, that's probably not a good idea.
I used to get to do this stuff, so I just thought.
Yeah.
Put it down here in the first place.
They've been out there for a long time, you know, always.
Well, it's been a fast practice to have that out there.
Sorry to make your job more difficult.
Well, anything else?
Nope.
Do you need anything?
I've got nothing. Just kidding.
Hurry.
We're all set for April Fool's.
Obviously it leaves, it's that time of year, but the leaves, the trees don't know that yet, so, you know, we're going through, we go through once, try to do a flea run every week. Try to do a flea run every week. When we get into the heart of the season, so the day we can have two weeks to get a, you know, that one run done typically. So be patient, have mountain of the road, not in the road. Obviously the, or the weather we had earlier this week kind of highlights the need to keep your leaves out of the gutters and out of the street. We can get to them, leave them on the grass, and if your grass dies, you won't have to mow it for a little bit, so it's okay. It'll come back before spring. So we'll get to them. Flooding, I just mentioned the flooding that we had earlier week. I guess I was just, I had it noted in here, but it was just a tie-in, again, I guess into the leaves. And to remind people that, you know, when it rains a couple inches or two, two and a half inches, there's, there's gonna be floods on roads. The weather service is putting on a flood warning, certainly tell us that there's an issue, call us for anything really. But just keep in mind that it's, you know, the system's designed to handle a certain amount of rain, repeat rain. There's, there's factors that are built into it. And then when we get extreme weather, it's just, only so much water can fit in a plate at one time, so. It typically goes down. You'll be, you have guys going around clearing off the grates to help speed it up some, but especially this time of year when there's leaves all over the road and the lawns, and then they get washed down and you can clear it off and then a half an hour later, it's, it's, it won't go down anymore. Phone system, I think we're gonna have something at the next meeting, hopefully, regarding the phone system. Currently I'm calling about every hour into the phone system because apparently NF, not NFP, NFP, whatever system they have, the Alwork system, doesn't work with text messages. Although when we bought the system, that's why we bought it, because we needed to have emergency calls that were dispatched to us. But now that doesn't work, apparently technology changed or something, but we get emergency phone calls through the fire department. They come right to my phone all the time without, without an issue, so. Either way, I think we're beyond, the other night when we were having all the flooding and the rain, I had to stay up basically all night long and call about every half an hour just to make sure that I wasn't missing somebody's call. Because they're allowed, they can keep, they can leave a message, which is almost worse because they think that somebody's gonna be responding to them and then it never dispatches us, it never calls us out. So we might try to change that to a half hour's number where we can forward the calls and that person, it would be a live person that will call it out, that leaves around a hundred dollars a month, which is, you know, it's an expense, but it's certainly better than somebody having an issue and us not being able to respond because we don't get dispatched.
Right.
I think we gotta go backwards with this technology because this company's not keeping up with, with it, so.
Jake, I did set up a time for you and Joe to meet with Spectrum too, because they have a whole new phone system too.
Yeah, but this one was a whole new phone system and it worked and that's why we, why we bought it because they were, had this capability and they don't. Now they want us to see if we can just email us instead. And I think that ding's not gonna wake me up in the middle of the night and the sound that I have for my text messages that will wake me up or actually wakes my wife up if she elbows me, I'm not gonna have that as my alert, my email alerts, because I get emails all night long. So I'm not gonna have that going off. So it, you know, it's gotta be just.
You got your dog.
No, it's not, it's not like a dog, but.
So they.
No, he has the off one.
They can't address that situation at all?
They said they can address it, none of it'll work, but since AT&T and Verizon are trying to block spam, which I don't know how that is, because I've gotten thirty-seven calls today about my car's extended warranty. So they're feeling miserable if they're doing that, but apparently the village text messages are spam, but my car's warranty is not. So it, it just blocks out everything. We tried to talk to NFP about it and they say, well, it's, you know, it's not their fault, it's not their fault, it's, it's the cell company's fault. And so I'm still getting text messages from everybody else. At the same time, I'm not getting text messages from our phone system. They take it, their, our phone system's tied into a survey, or server that, it's all electronics spaghetti, I don't understand it, but it's tied into a server that emails the, it basically sends an email out as a text message. We get those text messages and we can change whoever's on, whoever's on call. But somewhere, he's saying that the system's sending them out, but we're not getting them. So they're getting blocked somewhere at the phone company and they're not, I don't know, maybe they have to, maybe the phone company's saying, hey, you want us to send all your stuff through? You gotta pay us something and we'll make sure that they all get through. And I don't know if that's in their budget or what, but somehow the fire department's doing it, but this isn't doing it, so. I'm just, I hate the thought of our residents calling, looking for something. Typically what they call them is an after-hours, it's emergency. I'll get an occasional, hey, what time's the car will start and things that aren't for us, but most of the time, there's a reason that they're calling. So we wanna make sure that we can get those calls and respond to them, that's why we're here.
Can you find out what company they use?
Uh, it's BRICS and it goes to, every person in the fire department has a different, not everybody has a different one, but there's every carrier you can imagine, I'm sure. And we all, we all make the things. But BRICS is a system that they use for dispatching fire calls that's tied into this other system. But it's much the same thing, goes into the computer, generates an email and signs it out and they tell the text messages. I can try to ask, but it's, whatever they have works, luckily. So, and at, at different line, we're gonna, I requested a quote and we're looking at doing a little in-house ourselves, but I, I think the complexity of it is gonna require somebody else to be involved in a camera system for the wellfields. It's, it's getting kind of crazy down there. We get to store equipment down there, you know, in the wintertime and it's not cheap equipment. And there's kids, I'm assuming kids, getting in, you know, in, breaking into almost every building that we have down there. We've got, you know, near, darn near a half million dollars of equipment sitting down there sometimes. And people getting in messing with it's not a, not even a thing, but we have to spend a few thousand to protect it. And it's what we have to do. We're getting green light in there now, so we have that on the motor. And then we're gonna create a network there that we can tie these cameras into and be alerted immediately if anybody's inside, unless you use the same phone system, but hopefully we'll get alerted if somebody's inside any, either of the buildings. And then we have, we have cameras on the outside of your reports, some cloud-based storage. So we'll be able to go back and look and see if something happens down there, if we down there and hopefully curb, curb any issues.
There's no other place to store? There's no other place to store this equipment?
Uh, there, I can, I have some good news, and it's a high-quality buyer for the wood. Therefore, you'll use the barns.
No, I mean, it's in the barns. They're breaking into the buildings, they're, they're breaking into the garage. Um, we've got, one garage has five doors on the back, or, you know, four or five doors on the back of it with flexi-glass windows inside, and they popped that out, so we have a metal plate over the one that they popped out, but it won't be long before they're frustrated, they've knocked door handles off two of the doors, three of the doors. Um, they're, you know, as soon as they get bored, trying to get through that one metal plate, and I'm sure they're just gonna knock out the other flexi-glass one. As regards to storing the equipment, there's not really anywhere else to store the equipment.
Fun is, the land, the property is zoned for use as a municipal waterworks. It's no longer being used as a municipal waterworks. It's not zoned for the storage of highway equipment, or whatever else we're storing. So, that's a problem, only if somebody wants to complain about it, but, plus it's, plus, plus you're storing stuff, expensive equipment, basically in the woods, in that waterworks, so. Look, is there, you can rent space somewhere that's, you know, rather than spend thousands of dollars on a security system to store this stuff in the woods, maybe there's a, some private entity, um.
Xerox.
Or, no, Basket Road, um, help me out, Bill Bolter, can you store stuff down there and pay him some rent in the interim until ultimately, the village needs to find some land, ideally within the village, to construct a bigger public works facility. You know, 'cause what's back here clearly isn't sufficient, if you gotta store that kinda stuff out in the well, old wellfield, which ain't ideal, because like I said, it's in the middle of nowhere, you know, and naturally, you're gonna get kids in the woods, and they've been, you know.
How big of a building would be necessary to take? What about the land right down here? We have that field, that our field.
Right.
Um, behind the annex.
Right by the, right by the tower.
If it's for secondary storage, um, you know, that's, that's certainly, I think that may, may, may do the job. Um, it's, it's, Tom was talking about giving one, everything in one location, uh, because whatever you have in a remote location, I mean, there's, that's right along South Avenue, and there's still people who climb, or used to climb the water towers and that, when we had a water department, I know they tried to break it, they're climbing the water towers down there now, so, um, that's one of the things, we're working on the gate access there too, um, that's one of the companies that we always get. Met this company about the, um, the camera system, is because they also do gate access, and there's been an issue with the gate access, this control module went bad. Um, so we're looking at alternatives, make sure that we can still get in there, um, 'cause, you know, we have the property down there. The, uh, radio center, it has a big tower down there, WXXI, R G and A, and the Water Authority, and the Police Department, the Fire Department, you can get back in there. Um, the gate access you can get through, but you have to get through it manually. Um, and it sounds like there's, uh, much of a delay trying to get through the gate manually, if there's somebody back at the, back at the tank site, for instance. Um, the, uh, Water Authority's monitoring their tank site, when they get an alarm, they're gonna dispatch somebody over there, oh, the police, and, you know, somebody's up on the tanker, within their, within their gated area there, um, you know. So that, it would work, I guess, if it's just the auxiliary storage, it's the size of that small barn, or the, you know, the garage that's over at the wellfields is got four bays on one side and three on another, or two and a half, I guess, on the other side. Um, but we have a, we have a backhoe down there, leaf machines, the, the, um, we're not using it, the, the wood chipper, and the park some of the lawnmowers down there in the wintertime, and our street sweeper down there in the wintertime. We have one area, we kinda put it in, slayed the door on, so we can heat that area, make sure that, that, um, street sweeper stays warm. We winterize it, but you know, I test it, you know, as always, there's a lot of lines and stuff on that, so let's, you know, make sure that it, uh, try to keep it at least, keep it from freezing, and keep it minimally warm there. Um, that's the, that's one building, and the wagon's down there as well. Uh, some of the other, you know, equipment that we don't use all the time. Uh, we take our track list in the summertime, and park that up at the standpipe, they have a little building up on South Avenue. But.
We could use the church.
Yeah, it just seems to me there should be a more long-term solution here, rather than.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I got a connection.
At some, at some point, those buildings are supposed to come down, it's all, you know, it's.
I have no idea what that plan was. That's, uh, it's, I, I don't know what the plan is for those. Right now, we're just maintaining what's down there, and trying to maintain what's down there, um. I don't know, it's a little me.
Lots of time driving back in the woods.
Oh, Jimmy Doc, who he's got.
Yeah, Jimmy, take care.
I assure you one thing, we will not sell them tonight, so let's just table it. First of all, long-term, long-term plan.
Is there any room that's sewn to build it?
It's not zoned for D W W storage.
Just, just sewers shut.
This is what started the whole conversation.
Um, and then finally, finally, I see where you guys tried to trick me into just shut up, but, yeah, one more thing, uh, Xerox. Um, just really briefly, we started meeting, uh, met with them over the past week or so, discussing, uh, the sewers and potential dedication, and their, some of the sewer, they have a private collection system on their campus as part of their sales of property, um, looking at some of the sewers that are there, and, and what we might report, uh, to accept and offer a dedication, so. And then, um, trying to get a list together, we've talked to them briefly today about what, you know, kinda condition issues that we might wanna address, and then, you know, certainly have that before, I don't think they're gonna get it all done this year, so what we probably would have to do is look at some sort of agreement that they're looking to close on this, and kinda have it figured out, um, and need all their approvals, but at least if we can come to an agreement about what they're gonna do, and then set up when they would do it, so. One more.
What's that for you? Big one.
Tessie?
Tessie.
Tessie. We have, uh, two plants in China, two in.
Your manu-.
It's right here in New York. Yes.
They're in Syracuse.
Maybe you could make, uh, with, uh, dedication in the sewer main contingent, and Xerox giving the village a sewed building to store some of the.
Hey, I like it.
What'd you say about the old Xerox Fire Department building?
It'd be a good starter.
Yeah, if they're not using it, you know, look, we're doing them a favor taking that sewer line.
Don, I think you're onto something.
I think that's.
Maybe they even donate that building to us, you know, just.
At least it's within the building.
It is.
Or initiating that, um, half million towards, uh, the quadrant of roads that.
Yeah, that Marsha called.
That would be very nice, get that underway and get that going. That, that would certainly benefit everybody if roads were public. Roads, and they would, uh, fork in, and we could get, uh, Schumer to stay, all of them.
Okay.
I mean, you need somewhere to park that sewer bed truck, you know, to look at their sewer main and stuff.
Okay, um, the, uh, next village board meeting will be on Tuesday, the ninth of November, and, uh, that'll be followed on the twenty-third, with our second, that will be a Tuesday, and looks like both of those are Tuesday. The ninth is, uh, a Tu, boy, Tuesday for what reason?
Veterans Day, I think.
Ah, yes, I believe that it is Veterans Day on Thursday.
Yes.
'Cause I just heard schools will have the day off on Thursday, random, and back to school on Friday, so, yeah. All right.
Okay.
So that'll be on Tuesday the ninth, and Tuesday the twenty-third, and we'll be in the workshop. All right, one more thing that I'll announce, again, and that is this weekend, hopefully, we will have cooperating weather, but on the thirtieth, on East and West Main Street, and, uh, North and South Avenue, there will be Trick or Treat Trail, and it will run from twelve o'clock until two thirty P M. Uh, businesses will have a bright orange pumpkin display, if they are participating, and, uh, there tentatively will be a pet costume contest and parade, Howell, Oeen. And, um, that judging will take place, as dogs have walked along the trail, prizes awarded for first, second, and third place. Webster Museum will be open, uh, they will host Halloween at the museum, and the big festival wagon, if the weather's cooperating, will be running. I saw it decorated today.
Yeah, it's a nice show.
They did a really great job.
Really great job, I agree.
Did an awesome job.
Yep. All right, so we hope to see you in the weekend. Jake has one more thing?
Yeah, believe it or not, we were close. Um, just, uh, I don't, just a request, I don't know if anybody has had any discussions or knows the status of, uh, the special police. Obviously, the Trick or Treat, um, Trail, um, reminded me of that, they're not gonna be there. Um, East and West Main Street are planned to be closed down, um, and I know the bid was reaching out to, um, I believe the school, to see if the school's security, or if there's anybody that's crossing parrot stuff, um, 'cause they said East and West Main are closed out at the four corners, and that. Um, there was a, an email that said, you know, they just expected participants to, you know, follow the walk, don't walk, um, signs, um, a lot of the participants of Trick or Treat Trail can't read, 'cause they're like three and four, so, um, that might make it kinda difficult, so. Um, the special police, from what I understand, are shut down right now, or, or kind of in hiatus, I don't know if anybody's learned the status of that. Uh, it'd be very important, uh, I think, coming up for the Christmas, uh, uh, parade there, the parade of lights, um, uh, without the special police, I don't believe that event could even, could even happen. They, they do a lot of traffic control, um, not necessarily just on the parade group, where you don't see, um, so you don't see cars coming up to the parade group, so. Um, that would be really great if we could figure out what's going on with that, we haven't. I'll call, I'll call, since I'm a liaison to the Western P D, I'll call one of your. Yeah, I know, I think, I understand there was some issue with, uh, something, I think, was in Westchester County about we, they, they were formed, they were formed, um, some Civil Defense Act of the sixties, and they were only covered when, when, uh, we're getting attacked by the Russians or something, and, and since then, it's no longer happening, or creating as in heaven. Um, when they're training or doing things like this, um, they weren't covered, I guess, if someone was patrolling as auxiliary police, they were patrolling and actually hit somebody, and there was some issue about it being covered, so they kinda shut everything down. Um, our special police were formed differently, or reformed differently, I guess, but, so I don't know, I don't know all the ins and outs, but it'd be nice to get to the bottom of it, 'cause they're certainly a wonderful asset to our community, especially when you have these events.
Jake, Elena told me that she called the regular police, and that they have agreed to do all the other streets that the special police took over.
They said they're, they said they have events there, and there are people there, but they specifically said that they were not doing traffic control or crossing people.
Okay, so we should check with them.
Which is one of the major things that they did. That was just Tuesday, I think, or Wednesday, so that's one of the major things that they did, especially if you have a road closed, and a busy street in between, and another road closed, it's not unreasonable to think little kids might, you know, go from one side to the other if they see a bus leaving or on the other side of the road, or they can take it off, so, um, you know, that's obviously a concern, um, and there used to be, you know, everybody's used to having somebody there to, to help cross, so. Um, I don't know what the deal is with them, but hopefully we get them back soon, 'cause they're invaluable to these kind of events.
If I do it myself, draw my line best. What's wrong with the regular players?
I don't know if they can be dedicated to that, or if there's overtime, there's the police, they go to the carnival, the carnival pays for the police, um, to be there, they cover the extra shifts and the overtime things, so I don't know if, uh, if that's available. It's one of the suggestions I wrote back, is, we, uh, if you ask how many people we need to block, to, you know, to direct traffic and, and cross people, I say, I, I've crossed the traffic, crossed the streets successfully for fifty years now, but I don't look, I'm an expert, um, so I don't know, so call somebody that that's what they're, they do, they're trained, and, and that. I mean, it seems weird, anybody can stand there and block there, but you know, there's a huge liability when you're crossing somebody, and, you know, has some little kid, or people stand signals, people confused, that's why, you know, that always left it to the professionals. I don't know why they're not.
Thanks.
But the village would probably have to pay for the overtime, if you wanted extra, get regular police officers.
But the bid, are they, are they?
Yes, yeah. And it, and it's, that's why I suggested, I said, and I wrote to the bid, is that we might have to pay the overtime or do that, or, um, keep my, the bid, the hard part about the bid, they put on all these events for our community, but it's all the businesses are taxed extra, and then they spend their extra free time, or their business time, when they're not doing business, setting up these events for the entire community, to use the money that they paid extra to try to do stuff for the community, so it's like they're triple taxed almost, 'cause it's their money they're spending, they pay extra to be in the bid, it's their time and their money that they're spending to put on all these great things. Um, and it really, I mean, I think, since we've had a bid, it really has brought the community together, bring people into the village, they do a great, great job, and put on a lot of things, and it's, it's always the same people's money, the same people's time.
The same people's time.
Yeah, you know, yeah, it's their, they paid extra taxes, part of paying in that business improvement district, and that's, that's what they use the fun, that's where they get the funds from to put on the things.
Um, doesn't the village give the bid money?
No.
That's what we collect, and then, then village collects.
All right, well, we'll have a sign conversation on that.
Which is over and above. But there's no general village revenue, village tax money, very close to the bid.
These guys have an eight-thirty appointment, so we're going to adjourn the meeting, and then we'll have a sign-by conversation afterward. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make it. Yeah, I'll second. I'm trying to.
Are the jugs gonna be tonight?
Trying to get all the candy out of my pocket.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Now, you gotta take off while I'm setting up. All right.